Evening, like to call the Thursday, May 12th, 2022, meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission Order. Never open please.
Chairman Hartsfield.
Yes, here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
And Sean Nielsen.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the voice of saints, one nation, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Next is the approval of minutes from the April 28th meeting. Any comments, corrections, additions? Here but type us or just one.
I'm happy to correct this if you can point them out.
Would purview which came out as preview or something else.
What patient said on?
That would be. I don't see. Retain a motion.
To approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bones? Thank you.
Yes, this evening I wanted to take a minute to introduce our new senior planner, Chelsea Strombark, joined us a couple of weeks ago, so we're very excited to have her with us. And she'll be presenting two of the items this evening, some great work pulling them together. And anyhow, it'll it'll just be fun and adventurous. And yeah, we'll just work together to to take care of whatever questions and issues may arise. And like I said, just very excited and happy to have her with us. She comes to us from the city of Colorado Springs and has other experience with the city of Pueblo. I feel very lucky to have her on board.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
One comment, we've had some audio issues in our past meetings. And one suspect is that people in the audience may be viewing the podcast as they sit in the audience and they're getting feedback from that. So if that is something you might do, please make sure your mute is on so we're not picking up any feedback. Makes us the public hearings, our first case, CUP slash S R SPR 20-22-01, Fred's Towing CUP, request by MVE Inc., applicant and Gino LLC, the Colorado LLC property owners, for approval of conditional use permit and site plan review for Fred's towing, a commercial building with vehicle storage areas on lot one, Sunny Glen Retreat subdivision number two, also 2730 Mountain Glen Court in the community commercial zoning district. Staff, that was the presentation.
And thank you for that introduction. As Karen stated, this is my first planning commission hearing with you all. Please go easy on me. So the site is a 2.55 acre parcel east of Highway 24, south of Mountain Glen Drive in southeastern Woodland Park. The site here, as you can see, is highlighted in green. There we are. Now it is highlighted in orange and you can see that the site was previously used as an outdoor storage area, though it is currently undeveloped. There are existing mature evergreen trees and a steep rocky terrain located on the property's western perimeter adjacent to Highway 24. This train acts as a screen for the property as viewed from Highway 24. And we have some site photos showing that rock rocky edge. These are from Google Earth. They did not stand in the middle of the highway. We have some additional site photos indicating that it is mostly native grasses and dirt on the lot currently. These piles that you see in the background here are from a neighboring property. Again, other views of the site, as you can see from this view in particular, is viewed from the east up a ledge a little bit towards the residences. So this is a view from what could be viewed from the residences. Here we have a proposed site plan of the development. This is a tow yard and vehicle storage lot. You'd enter the site from an access easement from the property from the north, which is currently occupied by a gas station. Then you would travel up a driveway here. There is customer parking along the western edge of the property, or sorry, of the building. The storage yard is around the back, which is screened by an opaque fence. There is proposed detention area and a stream bed like feature kind of going along that that rocky edge there as a stormwater mitigation. We do have elevations for this development. They comply with our architectural guidelines, brown stucco rock, a green roof. And this would be the front of the building as viewed. As you kind of enter the property, I was going to say from Highway 24, but again, the way this property is situated up high, you're not necessarily going to see the building from Highway 24. This is the rear of the building facing the storage lot. This development does support our comprehensive plan. There are three goals and objectives that this meets land use goal and growth, land using growth goal number one, to provide opportunities for growth and development while preserving community and environmental quality. Economic Development Objective 1.2, retain area businesses and assist with expansion or adding complementary businesses to create clusters and critical mass. And Sustainable Environment Objective 1.1, recommend that development that minimizes its impact on the natural environment, creates a quality human environment through sustainable design and practices. Our future land use map does indicate that this is a commercial area. As you can see, it's right here. It was hard to zoom in that on our comprehensive map, future land use map. So this is part of a conditional use permit and site plan review. There are two different sets of criteria. They are remarkably similar. However, you can read them in detail in the staff report. I will touch on some highlights, but please feel free if you stop me if you have other questions or if you'd like me to go more in depth. This is a summary slide showing that this development does comply with all of the conditional use permit criteria. So again, I can go into depth on some of them, several of them. I don't know for its preferences. Okay. So these are all of the criteria, CUP criteria continued. There are 11 of them. And then the site plan review criteria, again, very, very similar, has to do with the site plan itself. As you can see here, it does comply with all of those criteria as well.
Would you touch on the traffic?
Yes, I can. So the site is accessed primarily through, actually not primarily, the site is only accessed by an access easement through the gas station. So it's the traffic is directly funneled from Highway 24 up to the site. It does not use any commercial or any residential streets. The applicant estimates 27 vehicle trips per day, including customers and employees.
Chelsea, since you're talking about the access, you've a couple of times now, one of the, there's some red text in the presentation or the package which indicate you hadn't seen access. Have you suddenly seen additional information on what that access season looks like? Do we know that it exists and is satisfactory?
It is platted, so that access easement is there. It's determined where that came from is that there is a gate with a chain and that kind of cued me, but then digging further into the plot, it is platted fully. However, it does, the access easement is intended to continue. Let me scroll back for a site plan here. I apologize. So if you can see my mouse, the the access easement follows this driveway, this proposed driveway, and it actually continues back here to adjacent lots. So this applicant may be provided or may be required to provide access to these back lots if required by the adjacent landowners.
Okay, but any of it, we're we're confident that the exist, the existing language in the plot is sufficient that there is access to this.
There is access to this property. Yes.
Do you know, are there other neighbors around them?
So to the south is a gravel and I apologize.
You pass.
You pass, thank you. To the north is the gas station. There is a vacant residential lot directly to the northeast of that of the proposed development. There are other residences kind of further back, but primarily their adjacent neighbors are also industrial.
Just like always control something that we might have to implement.
One of the conditions that staff is recommending is to have limited hours of operation from 7:00 AM to, yeah, dusted on, bonded us. On the desk. With emergency use permitted. It is an emergency service and therefore does need to have sporadic use overnight.
Okay, thank you.
Chelsea, something's come about neighbors and let me just go ahead and ask some. Has any consideration been done to the sightlines from existing properties relative to the property? And there's also at the end of mountain, at least the public portion of Mountain Glen, there is a, there's a wall.
Yeah.
Is there, does this, what kind of visibility blockages does this provide? And how does that relate also just to visibility to the property as used and or 25 foot highlights? Is this a case where a 20 foot height limit would work better for neighbors or something else today? We looked at sightlines or considered these certain things?
Yes. So one of these photos I actually, this this photo in the upper right is from the edge of that wall that you mentioned. So I wanted to see exactly how this would be viewed. So you can see it here on the upper left too. The building would be approximately right here. And again, with their aesthetics that they've chosen, I do feel that the visual impact would be mitigated.
How far of a drop is it from from the from the circle at the end of Mountain Glen Court down to the area where the building, the parking areas are?
Not sure of the elevation grade change, but I can absolutely find that information.
There's a few topo lines on that site plan. Yeah, well, no, there's certainly a big, significant drop. I just wondered how, you know, if and it just occurred to me too, like with 25 foot highlights, are those perfectly positioned that they're just above the wall? And if it was a little different, if considered differently, it might mitigate some impacts on the neighbors.
Yeah, we can absolutely look into that. We can add that as a condition if you prefer.
Me, I let depends what.
Why don't we continue with your presentation? We can ask questions after she's done before we have our publication. Public comment.
We are very close to the end. The staff recommendation is to that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of Fred's towing, conditional use permit and site plan review as presented with the following conditions, that all development impact fees must be paid prior to the ZDP issue issuance, including but not limited to tap fees, stormwater, capital improvement fees, transportation, capital fees, et cetera. Fees shall be calculated concurrent with the ZDP review. Number two, all exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of 3,000.
Yeah.
K or warmer and shall not exceed 25 feet in height pursuant to municipal code 18 dash 33 dash 180, at least 20% of the parcels parcel shall remain as open space. Pursuant to municipal code, section 18 dash 33 dash 180D, healthy existing significant trees shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible and may be used to satisfy landscaping, open space requirements. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan. Teller County Environmental Health Department approval for a septic system, which has been submitted. An infrastructure zoning development permit, fees only shall be submitted pursuant to the municipal code for installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks on Highway 24. D zoning development permit and building permits for all new construction, including all civil and construction drawings, final drainage report, final landscape plan, final site plan, final floor plans and elevation, final grading, sediment and erosion control plan. Final utility plan, final photometric plan, Colorado stormwater permit and stormwater management plan. Number six, prior to council public hearing, the applicant shall make revisions to the site plan as indicated in the red line plans. Number seven, hours of operation shall be limited to dawn to dusk, Monday through Friday. After hours emergency operations are permitted, subject to emergency requirements. Number eight, uses shall not include any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive materials unless protected by adequate firefighting and fire suppression equipment by such and by such safety devices that are normally used and handling any such material. Number nine, no smoke, odor, vibration, glare, or particular emissions shall be permitted, which can cause damage to health, animals, vegetation, or affect properties beyond the parcel boundaries. Number 10, notwithstanding any conditions herein, the CUP does not grant a noise relief permit and the use business shall at all times be subject to municipal code 9 dash 41. No. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We have any questions for staff at this point?
We, we go back to the staff.
Yes. Which part?
Let's go to actually the next slide. If I take that back, let's go, let's go back to the criteria. Or we could use either one site plan or conditional use permit.
Okay.
Let's go to conditional experiment.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back again. One more, one more. Utilities.
I'll number these next time. I apologize.
Um. Has that subject taken reviewed by city utilities? Are they okay with utilizing onsite disposal?
So we did speak with our utilities director and he indicated that this site was not eligible to receive wastewater facilities.
We're just too far down the pass.
Right. So septic is required, which has been submitted to Teller County Public Health.
Okay, second question dealing with utilities. Did utilities provide information about the availability and capacity of water at this particular site?
Yes, and they indicated that there is adequate water supply for this development, given that it does not particularly use very much water. And the use of this property has not changed significantly since the last water analysis. So it it was commercial and it's been calculated as commercial and it's still being used for a commercial purpose.
Okay, so it was allocated as
Right.
property, that's going to transfer over to the plumbing facilities within that building that we saw. I assume that would be it for for water use. So it's probably six and half a dozen of them.
Yeah, it it's not indicated to be a substantial water user.
Yeah.
Chelsea, do you know if there will be a hydrant in the vicinity of the the fixed facility?
There is a hydrant indicated on the site plan. I don't know necessarily that that location will change or will be substantially, currently their hydrant is indicated to be back here. And there was a comment about that on the red line plans, so that would be one of the items that would need to be met prior to city council hearing.
Meaning another hydrant would have to be put closer to the building?
The applicant would work with our engineering and utilities department to determine the best location for that hydrant.
Okay, but the other one will remain in place, the one that apparently serves the residential lot?
So that would be actually off of Mountain, sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the road, Mountain Glen Court. So that that property is accessed from Mountain Glen Court, and so all of its emergency services are planned for from that.
So you're saying we anticipate that there will be another hydrant placed on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
I was curious about the requirement for photometrics. What are criteria for reviewing that?
That is a great question that I will dive into as I get further versed with site plan review. I understand though, from this, having this condition in, it does leave room for improvement where if the photometrics are determined to be intrusive into the residential properties, we could require that those changes be made.
Thank you. Well, I guess we'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and see if they have anything to add to the discussion. Name and address.
Hello, Dave Lorman, address 2123 Sussex Lane, Carro Springs, Colorado. I'm with MVE representing Gino LLC and the owner, Mike Serpozi, is here as well. The presentation was very complete and detailed, just a couple of things I wanted to to mention. And I can, I can point at the at the map I have here. With the the grades, as we discussed, the grades for the site are much higher than than Highway 24 here. I don't expect any of any of this to be seen by people driving by. We're we're in, and then with respect to the existing residential area here, we're about 15 to 20 feet below. The 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 floor of this building is about 15 to 20 feet below this area up here. This is a retaining wall with a fence with with the fence in the, so you know, from from up here, you're going to be looking over. And I think I think you could see that from the photos that were shown. What 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 happens with this side is everything does drain down this way. And we did prepare a drainage report for this site. All the all the parking lot and building area will drain into this pond. It's a water quality facility and storm detention facility. This area here is the 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 rocks here is an existing riprap drainage channel. It doesn't look like much like a channel. It looks like just a, just some rocks laid out sort of like a stream bed. And and so when we, when we did the analysis for this, for the drainage, the the flows coming out here with this pond installed, it was actually less than what we calculated for the existing conditions. With regard to the to the lighting, I, what what we had put on the plan was that the the lighting is to be full cut off, so when the actual fixtures are going to shine down as much as possible. The the height, you know, we, the height was limited to 25. I think that's actually adequate. I don't think there's any problem if if they needed to be a little bit shorter, but there is a need for for security and on the site, so we we would want to have some lighting there. I don't expect it to, for the for light to spill over any of the property boundaries. It will be concentrated over here. And and on this side, as was mentioned, there's, there's the 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 youth sand and gravel. Over here, we have the gas station. And so I think the main concern would be from the residential there. And and so we're we're far enough removed. I'm not expecting any problems with the with the lighting. One of the questions was the how to do with the utilities. So the the fire hydrant that we're showing here, that's that was our suggested location. It it can move. There's a, there's an existing water line along here. We are connecting the domestic service from that to the building and also the fire, a new fire line with a fire hydrant here. So so there's, that can be adjusted fairly easily and we can work with the with the water department for that.
As long as you're on that page, could you, this is your utilities page, I assume?
Yes.
Where is, and you wrote you saw a pretty typical septic system?
Yes, right, right.
Where's the field for that?
The 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 field is right here.
Okay.
On-site wastewater treatment system, the the line comes out of the building and and goes through here. The the septic tank isn't shown, but that will, that will be on the site as well before that. So did we have the water coming in the side, sanitary sewer leaving the side in the field?
What kind of setback do you have to the adjacent property? Of your field?
Oh, so so this distance here from 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 the building to to this parking, the edge of the parking is about 50 feet. So so this is about 100 feet from here to here and from 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 here, you're, that's, that looks like it's about 70 feet.
From the field to the property.
From the field to the property, property line, yes.
Okay.
And and something that's going on here is that this is sloping down. So again, it's kind of the same situation that you have from the highway where you're looking up and you're not necessarily going to see any of this that's that's being put there. And and there is, there is a, there is a fence line, as was mentioned, that goes around around this whole thing. So you, what's visible here is the front of the building and some fence. And I think the next thing that I want to just mention is all these elevations. Regarding the the landscaping, this this landscape plan was done. Most of these, these existing trees are going to remain. Some some of the existing trees here, there there's some, there's about three or four trees right here that are too big to transplant. But there's some, and they would be in the way, but there's some other smaller ones that that are can be transplanted. And you can see that there's going to be new trees placed along here for screening and and some new trees here. And and the existing trees, most of these, even though there's a pond there, these can, these can, those can all stay. If there's any, if there's any other questions, I think I covered everything I wanted to cover, but if there's any other questions, I can certainly answer. Oh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the nature of the business. Mike is and his and his employees are picking up disabled cars, cars that are left and 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 on an on-call basis and bringing those to here for storage. And there's about, there's about five employees altogether. Not all of them come to the building here to to work. Most of, so about two of them are dispatched from home. So really, the the number of employees is at the site is limited. We're not expecting a lot of noise. There's, there's not there's not a lot of noise making activities here. The the hours that were suggested in the in the in in the in the conditions are fine. Eight to five is their normal, is their normal working hours, but as as was mentioned, you know, there are times where car has to be picked up in the in the middle of night and brought here on an emergency basis. This is a great place for a business like this, right off the highway. It it's easy access for for picking up and dropping off. And it's, it's also not a place, it's, it, well, there's, it's, you know, it has, it has some commercial use around it already. And, uh, and I, and I think that we're, we're, uh, a, able to mitigate whatever impacts on the, on the, on the, on the residential here with, with the fencing and, and the elevation change. But, uh, if there's any other questions, I can, I can answer those now.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Right, I have a couple, um, to start with. I'm disappointed that there's no Fred. I've always thought there was a Fred. The, the location that Fred's towing is at right now, what will be done with that property? Just put on the market or? It's not relevant to the, the request, but I'm, I'm just curious.
Let, let me ask Mike about that. What, um, your, your current location?
Please, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Sercozy. Uh, I want to touch bases about the old place. I can't wait to get out of there. It's a nightmare. Should be condemned. I'm, I'm just telling you, it's, it's a can of worms that needs to be opened, but if it's open, I don't know what's going to happen. So I want to get out of there. I made an offer to the owner Ken Bush. I told him I'll buy the property for $650,000. I will knock it down, clean all that area out. That was my thoughts, but he thinks his property is worth about a million. So I'm moving forward with this plan. I also want to mention about this plan is you're going to have a lot of visibility with state patrol because we pay for state patrol. Woodland Park Police, you know, we're kind of tied together, Teller County Sheriff. So there's a lot of, uh, law enforcement coming around this area. I want to explain, there's one office staff, sometimes two there, period. Most of the drivers take their trucks home. We dispatch them from home. Unfortunately, sometime in the middle of the night, you know, we get a heavy, which is, uh, the big semi truck that needs to go out to accommodate state patrol or Woodland Park or Teller County. But most of the time it will be maybe once or twice a week that we actually go in there to move a, a truck or a semi. But there will only be like 15 minutes when you start and you move. And maybe 10 minutes when you bring it back in. I want to comment also mention about the lights. Already have the lights. These are the ones that shine down. So there will be nothing going out. Be strictly down on motion sensor. So the only time they go on is when somebody goes in there. I don't know. If you have any questions for me, I'm trying to answer as best as I can.
My follow-up question, uh, relevant to the site is the recovery vehicles will be stored inside of the new building or in the compound itself?
Well, unfortunately, one, two has to be outside, but it will be on the backside of the building. This is the building. This is why I put 50 feet around here. And also there's a, a four feet wall here or a six foot fence with all kinds of, uh, what do you call them? Things go through the fence. So you can't see through it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay. And sometime I have to park a couple of them here, but most will be inside, one or two. But most will be inside because especially in the winter time, you have to plug them in. You got to keep them warm. Diesel don't start in the winter time. And also the water tap you guys were talking about, all of these are three quarter inch. There's only one bathroom and one girl and one guy possibly that's using the water.
Thank you.
Mike, typically when you bring a, a vehicle into the lot, how long does it stay there?
Most of the insurance company want to run everything one or two days. The unfortunate part is when it's a, a fatality, then the state patrol has got to do all the investigation, find out what's going on. It could be anywhere from two weeks to a month and a half. But that's only when it's a fatality and it happens.
The fear would be the, the vehicles will be brought in and returned into a junkyard. You're not talking about that at all. You're talking about a facility that you take vehicles in for a, a period of time. Then they go somewhere else to, to a junkyard.
Yes, they, what, what, what happens, I'm going to explain a little bit further. We have by law by PUC, Public Utility Commission. We cannot dispose of a vehicle before 30 days if they abandon it there. We have to send letters out, notify the, the owner, then they have 10 days to come and get it. If they don't, then we take you pulling pay down Colorado Springs off 8587. So within worst scenario, if they abandoned the vehicles, it's about 35 days, but that doesn't happen too often.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Um, it hasn't been addressed, but oh, oh, what kind of signage are you anticipating?
What's a what?
Signage, you're going to put something on Highway 24?
Well, that's what I'm working with. Yeah, Kelsey, I, I don't know yet.
I guess it's not relevant.
But I would like to put a sign, but I would not want to put it down where the easement is. You know, I would like to put a little bit further back. I also been talking to Kelsey. What I would like to do is with this big slope here in Highway 24 looks like crap, like red clay. Okay. I would like to landscape it. Maybe they give me a discount on the sidewalk. And I want to plant some flowers, some trees and whatnot. So when you do come into Woodland Park, it doesn't look like red clay. That's my position.
And I, I had a further question about the trees. You talked about the new landscaping that came there. On the site plan, there are a number of larger trees located to the west of the building. Looked like they were in the landscape area, but they're not showing on your landscape.
Okay. Yes. If you go back to the picture, it shows all this area right here. There's hardly any trees where the building goes. The fire origin is right down here. It's between me and youth pass. It's almost at the edge of the property. So wherever it shows here, it's about 50 feet further east. So in this area right here, no trees. Here in the front is plenty of trees, plenty of trees here, bunch of trees here. On this side, which is where the youth passed, thought they could just go ahead and make themselves a home. So they put all the material there. I finally got them out of there. Okay. On addition to that, uh, right over here is where the electric comes in. Core electric is going to come in and move it for free and pull it right over here on this, on this spot right here. Then we, it's our responsibility to bring power into the buildings. Up, up in here where the street is, I think it's up here somewhere. There's only one house in this corner that could see probably my property, but, but once I put the wall and the building comes up, they'd probably be able to see just the roof of it. From 24, it's impossible to see my building or my storage lot. It's impossible. If you guys drive by there, walk up there. There's no way you can see it.
Could we put the site plan up on the screen, please? I haven't seen the landscape plan, but on the bottom and the left side, there are two large trees that appear. The circles, I'm assuming they're trees, but I'm, I'm not seeing them on the landscape plan. Maybe they're just not highlighted.
I think, I think we're looking at.
That's one of them.
Yeah, that's along 24.
But I think, okay.
That, that one.
Okay, it is there on the planner. I guess you got the new trees highlighted and I'm just, uh, not reading the document. So very good. It's one of the requirements to keep the.
There is, there is a few more trees here. They're not huge, but there are a few more trees there. And the lady that did, uh, my septic tank, she kind of moved around it because it's a, in other words, she moved around that no trees have to be removed. No trees. And my driveway and whatnot, it will be no trees removed. No.
Yeah, Mike, can I ask you a question? I know that you had talked about the fencing and how it kind of goes along the top and down the bottom. Are there plans to finish it and then come up to the building so that what's being parked back there is enclosed? Or is it just kind of that U shape and the front of it is all open?
Okay, from when you come off the driveway here, this is the gate, the fence will be all the way around the property all the way.
So just go back up in it. Okay.
I mean, I have to have it because of security reasons is required by state patrol and Woodland Park Police. I cannot leave. I have to have cameras, have to have alarm and just it goes by by fatality when I, we, we can even touch the vehicles once it comes in there.
I just want a clarification. It's okay.
The four feet plus six feet, you're looking about
Okay.
10 feet. I, I mean, there's only one house can probably see the roof of the building.
One, one item, um, I find it interesting. This, the address is 2730 Mountain Glen Court. This kind of leads maybe Ken's question about signage and such. I think the gas station convenience store on one side, youth pass and youth sand and gravel on the other side are both Highway 24 addresses. This lot doesn't touch Mountain Glen Court, but with an address of Mountain Glen Court, I'm wondering if commercial business, you know, visitors and such to the place. I'm going to drive up Mountain Glen Court looking for it. It seems like it's an address that's going to, it's just designed to get commercial traffic into this very small dead end, very small dead end street. You see, you notice my point? It's very odd to call it 2730 Mountain Glen Court.
Uh, I, I, I understand what you're saying. Addresses, of course, are, are assigned by 9, 911 and, and, and the county. So, um, I, 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 I don't know if, uh, we, they, they may entertain a, a notion to, to change that, but, uh, that, that's what they've done right now.
Because it appears it's, you know, it's a little odd, but it also could have impacts to the, to the neighbors by having, is it, is, is that's, is that's it seems like it's just wrong.
We've made a note of that and, um, before the building permits and such are issued, this is definitely the perfect time to explore whether or not that's addressed correctly.
Okay. And, and I'm not saying it's, yeah, it's, I don't know if it's for the applicant to get them, but it just seems like it's, it ought to be correct.
Made a note to look into that.
Okay.
Yes, I got one last question. Uh, you, you, you both, and you can answer this question. You've reviewed the recommendation of staff and the conditions of approval. Do you accept all those conditions?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I mean, it'll be a good thing for all of us. I'll be honest with you. I just need to get out of there. I mean, it just takes, it's, I kind of want to be open to there. Just saying. So whatever I can do to help, I'll, I'm here to help.
So.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to get opportunity to open the public comment. David, do we have anybody on our list? Okay, let's, um, can you?
I'll, I'll read that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm current, uh, this is from Dustin Bench. I'm currently building a home in that neighborhood and have paid a lot of money to develop the site built by a water tap and pay city fees. This would have impacted my decision to build. My biggest concern is the lights at night. Residents has generally shut their lights off at night and commercial properties do not. That is right in the view of Pike's Peak and it will impact the view at night, even if they don't point down.
Good, thank you. And I think the applicants indicated that they're going to be on motion sensors. So hopefully nobody's going, please.
The whole thing, there are motion sensor and the lights are out about a foot and a half and they got honeycombs in the back. So all they do and it's not towards their property or anybody, they're just certainly shutting down into the ground. Okay. So it's not, it's like, you know, some of the spotlight is spot everywhere. These are actually, they're sensitive. How do you call them? Soft lights? I don't know what they call them. They're very soft. They're not very bright, but they're soft lights. And they only come on when a motion comes into the yard. It has to come into the holding yard. Not in front, not on the side, has to be in the holding yard. It, it with the camera and have to say that is requiring by law enforcement that I have to have cameras, lights, fencing area. And they also, um, state patrol and Woodland Park and the sheriff that do patrol, even more Fred's doing where it's at now. They do come through there once in a while at night to make sure the security and the safety, what's going on.
Um, yeah, so we've got people in the audience. We glad to have you come up.
Just name and address, please. Hi, uh, Jim Cosgrove, 2781 Mountain Glen. Uh, if we could, um, go back to this picture. Well, I guess this is fine. Um, I live about, I had a tough time trying to actually map this out, but I live about here. And this building will be directly southwest of me. And from my deck, I can see the base of the trees that are going to be removed here. A photo. Um, so my request would be is if some trees could be put up in this area here. North and northeast of the retaining wall.
Is that a picture from your house?
Yeah.
Show us so we can see.
It's not the best. The problem in this meeting was.
It is from a staff perspective, um, we would like to have that picture at the end of the meeting to include. Thank you.
I can send you a soft copy that you can actually read. Um, that's my primary concern. Um, the address issue, that kind of was a question to me. I think if that's changeable, that would be good. Because we do get a fair amount of traffic up here, nine, 10 o'clock at night, somebody's at the end of our driveway. And then they get lost and back out and the dog goes crazy. All that. So. And if I should process up to you guys earlier. Anyway, just trying to mitigate not be a problem. So that's all I got.
Appreciate your input.
Sure.
Anyone else in the audience? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Like to make comments? No, no one on Zoom. One last chance. All right. Nobody in the audience? Public comment is now closed. Staff comments, questions?
Just to address a couple of the neighborhood concerns that I just heard, uh, would you be willing to go ahead and modify your landscaping plan at trees to northeast corner? And number, number two, the, the, the staff report talks about, uh, the presentation of that photo, photo metric plan that Ken talked about, that would be the opportunity to talk about and how to adjust the lighting in such a way to lessen the impact from another person that we heard about on, from Zoom. So maybe we could address that with the photometric plan and assure that a final inspection, inspect, inspects the photometric plan for compliance. And that way those things should be taken care of those concerns.
So that might be an additional comment to verify the lighting prior to CO.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right here, right now, but just to make sure it's in the photometric plan.
Uh, we can, um, a, a, a photometric plan, of course, was, wasn't submitted with the initial submittal. We, we, we could have someone do that, but, uh, you know, the lights are going to be necessary. And if someone's looking down on the site, they're going to see the light shining down on the ground. What we can do with the photometric plan is make sure there's, there's no light spilling over property lines or, um, shining up. All the, you know, all the lights are going to shine down full cutoff lenses. And, and, but we can certainly, uh, show that with the photometric plan.
Somebody has some suggestion, is there some suggestion we should make to revision to the landscape plan? Not that we have, not that we figure out today, but is there some like, something that trees in the northeast corner as, as, as the staff? The staff confirms or something?
I just make a note of that to be included with the final landscape plan.
If I may, uh, so we do have a condition that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of one of those items is a final landscaping plan. So, uh, as the reviewing. So, uh, as the reviewing planner, I will, uh, ensure that we capture that comment accurately during that review.
So I don't know if we can put a condition on the address, it really should be a highway twenty four address and not, uh. Don't know what, uh, who assigns that or who approves that change.
Um, Dave's flagging at himself back there that, um, I think it's done in tandem with, um, nine one one. So at a staff level, like I said, I definitely made a note of that, I truly understand life safety concerns and that ability to, um, you know, find a property in an emergency. Um, so no, it's, it's as far as I'm concerned at a staff level, it's a high priority that we look at that. And like stated earlier, it is the perfect time to take care of changing an address before you've got, um, you know, a business on the site. Um, so no, we, we will be doing follow up.
A condition on it too, because then we get, then the applicant gets trapped because it's not happening and then it's not in his control or something too, but.
Well, it's something.
Apparently everyone, apparently federal be noted, so.
Yeah, no, it really falls on staff to, to, to work that out, it's harder for somebody to.
And then just to clarify, the zoning is currently community commercial.
Yes.
And it's been, been that way for, there's no change proposed and it's been established for some time.
That is correct.
So. There's no change or other development would have same possibilities of commercial activity. I guess we'd be looking for a motion, unless there's other comments, discussion?
One more comment, just, just to thank the staff for, I had. Noticed that in the staff report, it did not talk about compliance with the conference plan, future land use plan. During the presentation, it was brought to our attention, the future land use app calls for this to be commercial. So it's very important to have that information staffed for, it's very important that you provide that information to us because. That, that, that resonates very strongly with me for any project that does conform with the conference plan. So again, appreciate that knowledge.
Nothing else then? Or a motion to be made?
I, I, do I need to read the entire recommendation with all? All caveats or just move to approve the CUP slash S, SPR? Uh, by MVE Incorporated, which is the applicant and Gino LLC. A Colorado LLC property owner for approval of a conditional use permit and site plan review for Fred's towing. A commercial building with vehicle storage area on lot one, Sunny Glen Retreat subdivision filing number two at now currently twenty seven thirty Mountain Glen Court in the community commercial zone. With all staff recommendations.
So be it with, with conditions one through ten as presented in the staff report?
With conditions one through ten as presented in the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
Karen, bring, take off all numbers.
Sure, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
And Chairman Hartsfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go Fred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will take us to our second item in tonight's public hearings. That's SUB two zero two two dash zero two, extension of the Haven at Paradise preliminary plat. A request by Frankie Valenzuela and Jonathan James. For a two-year extension of the preliminary plat approved for a three-point, or three, thirty-five point seven seven acre. Or so of King's Crown Road or twenty-four residential lots in suburban residential zone. Just staff, Josie again?
Nope.
Back to Karen, thank you.
I'm bringing up the. Conversation here real quick. So. Yeah, thank you for announcing the item and it is a, a request for a two-year extension of the preliminary plat for, um, the Haven at Paradise. This is a, a portion of a larger development known as Top of Paradise. So we're going to provide some other background information to, to kind of explain some of the history and, um, that will help frame things a little bit. So, um, as shown on the screen here, the site is this lovely red star here, um, on the east side of Woodland Park off of King's Crown Road. Um, I stated that this was part of a, a larger development, uh, known as Top of Paradise. It was a, a master plan that was adopted back in two thousand and five and it's this area that's outlined in red. Um, that was encompassed in that overall plan and, um, that's in an area that is zoned suburban residential. And that master plan, like I said, it's been broken up into a couple of different sections and phases. Uh, there's this middle portion here that has since been plotted and developed with single family homes. Uh, there's a portion to the north that is owned by, um, another, another property owner. And then these gentlemen were talking about this portion down in here in the lower right-hand corner. That this is known as the, the Haven of Paradise. So for that timeline, uh, like I said, uh, the original master plan was from two thousand and five, but more recently. It was in twenty fifteen when that master plan was extended for five years, because that's the timeline that can happen for master plan extensions. And, um, that overall area is actually about a hundred and ninety-nine acres, uh, with a total of a hundred and ninety, um, suburban residential lots. And so, um, it was in April of twenty nineteen when this particular preliminary plat was approved. Uh, for these thirty-five acres, um, with twenty-four lots. And where things get a little confusing, um, we had a neighbor come in and talk to us this morning, it was quite helpful to, to help with this context. That, um, it was in September of twenty twenty where that master plan was back in front of, uh, planning commission for renewal. And at that time, since fifty-eight lots of that were planted in twenty nineteen, that's that middle portion. Uh, you were talking about the remaining hundred and thirty-seven acres. You know, with the, the, still the overall lot build out being a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety lots, fifty-eight of which were already planted. So anyhow, that master plan is, um, very, is valid, it's, um, in place through twenty twenty-five. And so, um, with the preliminary plat for the Haven that we're talking about. Having been approved in twenty nineteen, it was good for two years initially, so that, uh, was set to expire in April of twenty twenty-one. And at that time, uh, it was extended to, um, April of twenty twenty-two, April fourth. So, um, since then, um, these gentlemen have purchased this property and, um. Since I've been here at the beginning of December, I had several conversations with them as they've started work on this project. And, uh, it is true active work that it was in February when they submitted, uh, for the grading permit and turned in all the construction drawings for the infrastructure that needs to happen with this particular phase. And then we had several conversations about, oh, should we just file for a final plat? Or should we extend the preliminary plat, we went back and forth on some of that. Um, so it was actually March thirty-first, uh, prior to the extension or the, the expiration of the preliminary plat. Where they did submit a final plat to us, um, and then of course we had a few more conversations. Um, and decided to go for both the belt and the suspenders, um, so that's why they came in with the application for the, the preliminary plat extension. This helps just make sure everything's still solid, potentially looking at if I develop this in multiple phases, just wanted to take any questions out of that as to whether or not this is still.
One item you, as you referred to a couple of times. I think actually runs April fourteenth.
Everything I was seeing was April four.
And I, I just pulled up the minutes from, from a year ago, so it was, could have been April fourteenth and it was extended to April fourteenth and the minutes from our March eleventh. So I just, we're, just, just because I keep in front of the dates, it, it only is ten days different, but I think, I think these gentlemen, if someone we approve it, should, should get their extra ten days.
Well, and we typically go back to the date of the first approval and not the.
The data, the reason, I believe the reason was April fourteenth was because that was the date of the first approval.
Okay, we will, we will double check that. Yeah, thank you for that. So, um. This next slide again draws attention back to the section of the site that we're talking about. Um, so it's this, this area here right off of King's Crown Road. And, um, just an aerial photo for reference. Uh, where you can see some of the lots that are already in place through other developments, the outline of the, the subject property that we're talking about. And then, uh, this was the final plat that they submitted at the end of March. And I, that's not the topic of conversation this evening, but I wanted to include it just to kind of help with that concept of it's consistent in terms of, of overall, you know, layout and what they're doing with infrastructure.
And so their draft, their draft final plat was identical to their preliminary plat.
That's the next slide, which is the, um, the preliminary plat that was renewed, um, a year ago.
Similar, but they're the same.
Yeah, the, the overall layout is, yeah. So, uh, with that, staff's finding was that the request is reasonable, they've actively been working on this project. Uh, we have not any changes made to our subdivision regulations that would affect the plat design. And so our recommendation is, um, approval of a one-year extension, uh, for the Haven of preliminary, Haven of Paradise preliminary plat. Based on the original date in April, uh, to the year twenty twenty-three. And, um, the reason for the one-year extension instead of two is that is what is limited by code. Questions?
We, uh, planning commission makes the final decision on extensions of preliminary plats.
Correct.
We don't make a recommendation to the council.
You are the deciding body in this situation.
I'm confused though, Karen, I thought this was a recommendation for a two-year extension, no?
They asked for two, but the code limits, uh, preliminary plat extensions to one year.
Okay.
So when does this? Extension, not aspire, but when do the terms? What do they have to do to meet the terms of this extension and satisfy so that, uh, no further extensions, is it the completion of the project?
Submission of a final plat is what, what covers that.
Or if they, if they final plat a portion of it, the remainder continues in fact, well, that's done and, and adds another year.
Yes, so it does.
If they, if they phase it as was talked about.
Yeah, it does, it does indirectly extend the preliminary plat for the, the portion that's not part of the final plat.
Has, has there been any further discussion about the, uh, track B? The, the open, open space?
Uh, we talked a little bit about that, that's one of those points that's not completely, uh, firmed up at this point. Um, and so, but hence the belt and the suspenders, it gives us a chance at a staff level to work with the applicant and, um. Kind of finish, finish working that out, because I know from the minutes that was, um, in issue a year ago and there was concern over. How that property would be cared for and there was a recommendation that it be dedicated to the city. That, that was at that point in time, so, um, right now, um, not asking for any changes around that at this point.
My impression is the park, Parks Board had seen it and was, and was also supportive of receiving that land in lieu of park, park fees.
I, we'll dive into that further, uh, when we're really processing the, the final plat.
That's old news, that's my impression.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point, comments? Is the applicant here, like to come up and address the board?
Good evening, uh, thank, thank you for having me, Frankie Valenzuela, I just wanted to be here, just, you know, be able to provide any support or questions, uh, anything you, you might have, but, uh. We're working diligently to try to get this pushed and started with. As few problems as possible to the community and just try to bring something better to the community at the same time and help with this whole housing crisis we have in Colorado. And at the same time, try to contribute to the, the type of design and architecture that the city, uh, the city is wanting to see. But I'm open to any questions that anyone might have.
First, Mr. African? Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to open the public comment, anybody signed up for this one, David? Yeah, please come to the podium. Name and address?
Thank you for having me, my name's Lawrence Wetterstrand, uh, I live at eleven fifty King's Crown Road, which is right around the corner from this. Um, and I, I guess this is really just kind of an opportunity for me to vent a little bit, for lack of a better term. Um, I was trying to figure out, I, I moved here in two thousand and nineteen, October of two thousand and nineteen, so the, the plan had already even approved. And I really had no idea what was going on there, um, I, I was okay with it. Um, you know, there's some type of development up at the intersection of King's Crown and King's Crown, which is kind of weird, but yeah. So anyway, um, when this came up, there was a sign posted at the, the accessway from King's Crown. So then I went to the staff report and tried to figure out, okay, what exactly is it that we're doing here? It, it appeared as though we were trying to provide an extension for a, uh. A plan, but the extension had, or, had already expired. And the only way that it is valid is if a master site plan, what's the term I'm looking for there? Is if the, the final plat has been submitted. Um, so I went to, and, and if you look in the documents that were prepared by the staff plan. It's actually on the, the second page of the, the staff plan. It says, in addition, the applicant has been actively working towards the middle of the final plat, indicating that one has not been submitted. So if it hasn't been submitted, then how could it be extended? So then I went to the city this morning, went to the planning and zoning and said, you know, what, what have we got going on here? This was at ten o'clock. We can't find the drawings. Okay, can, can you just send them to me so I can see what's going on and reveal them and make sure that I feel comfortable, not that I need to feel comfortable, make sure it's there. Came back at two fifteen, still can't find the drawings, they're not easily accessible. So then, when I came this evening, I was shown that there was a, a, a small piece in the presentation. And that's all I've been able to see, so that, to me, there are just way too many discrepancies there with how that whole thing came about to, to, to. To allow approval this evening.
Well, thank you for your comments, we'll have some discussion, sure, okay. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? David, anybody online? Hands up, no questions? Last call for anybody online wishing to add comment? Seeing none, no one from the audience? Public, uh, comment is now closed. Let's give the opportunity for the applicant to respond.
I don't have all the dates with me or access to them, but if, if I have some time, I could. I can respond accordingly, but based off how in the past one, when we, when we procured the land, we, we did our due diligence and everything was in order and all the dates. All the dates for the submittals were met, and it, it's my opinion that everything has been submitted per the law. We, we, we wanted to reapply for, what should we apply for the extension just to be, just to be safe? And make sure that we're following protocol and going above and beyond all the dates and all the requirements for extensions and all that.
So discussion, questions, the board?
Listen, Miss, as you can tell, maybe I looked up, I did try and look at this question too, just of my own initiative, seeing this package. I believe that. Minutes indicate that last year we approved a one-year extension through April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I understand from the staff report that the application to extend this was submitted prior to April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And while it's technically. Two or, you know, two or three weeks passed that when we were acting on it, I think the practice has always been if it's received, if it's timely received, it's not the applicant's issue when we, when we. We hold a meeting to do that. If the applicant had come in. For the first time in May, I might be the one stepping up in this issue, but as best I can tell, it's has been. And time, it's been timely filed. That follows our practices. Does that just? All right.
And I'm happy to address time. I mean, I apologize that that staff report is probably not as tightly written as would be helpful. And then I do have with me a printout of the email that we received on March thirty four, thirty-first from Mr. Valenzuela. That under the attachments is where the, the final site or the, the final plat is, is listed, as well as other documents associated with the final plat application. As well as some additional information related to of their grading permit. So yes, earlier today, having a hard time laying hands on this, I, we, we own that. But like I said, I have a date stamped document for when we have received that at the end of March. So my apologies to you, sir, that we were not able to handle and that to you earlier today.
Later time, you can sit down with Art and go through.
Yep.
Master plan, preliminary plat that's being extended.
Happy to get him that information.
Get him up to speed on his neighborhood. For the comments, questions? As we be looking for motion. Like a, a move that the commission approval, this is to take following last year's format. The commission approved a one-year extension of the approved Haven of Paradise preliminary plat, S U B nineteen dash oh one. To April fourteen, twenty twenty-three, subject to all the conditions of the original preliminary plat.
Second.
Please.
Christopher Harvey? Yes. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Commissioner, our chairman Hartsfield?
Yes.
Christopher Brown?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Takes us to our third item for tonight's public hearings. C U P. S P R twenty twenty-two dash zero two. Grove at Spruce Haven, C U P, considering request by Joe Kent of nine twenty Spruce Haven. LLC applicant. For a conditional use permit and site plan review for construction of six. Two-unit attached single-family dwellings on two point one eight acres. In a portion of the west half of the northwest quarter of section twenty-four township twelve. South range sixty-nine west, six principal meridian, also known as part of the. Oh, it's tracks with an address of nine twenty Spruce Haven Drive, the multifamily residential suburban zone. Guess it comes back to Chelsea.
It does, and I want to thank you for doing the hard prep for me. We have an application here for six two-unit attached single-family dwellings, commonly known as duplexes. And we have the location, Spruce Haven Drive. Just to the west of Highway sixty-seven. The site is zoned multifamily residential suburban M F S, which was completed last year in order to facilitate this development. Sorry, it was rezoned last year. Here we have the current site. It is currently undeveloped. You can see to the. North and west, there are residential units nearby. To the east is Fred's towing. And to the south is Tractor Supply. I here are some current site photos. Again, you can see they are, is primarily undeveloped. With native grasses, there are, there is a grove of aspen trees, which I find funny on Spruce Haven, but. They, the applicant has stated that they will be retaining as many trees as possible, given the site layout. Now to the fun part, here is our site plan. You can see that all of the units will be accessed off of an internal drive. So there will be one driveway off of, one private drive accessed off of Spruce Haven. Each of the units will be. Access from that private drive. On each side of the north-south running private drive. There is a parcel of land. That is currently not planned for development, maybe working towards the open space requirement. Here's a little bit easier view of the property, along with some of the landscaping that the applicant intends to include. Here we have elevations. The applicant. Has provided these elevations and materials. However, we currently don't have a color palette. They have indicated verbally that they do intend to meet with the park's natural color aesthetic, though we don't currently have those colors in hand. And this is very similar to our last conditional use permit and at site planner view. So all of the conditions are remarkably similar from one type of permit to another. And I, I'm sorry, I misplaced my, my slide that had all the stoplights on it. But we'll go with the comprehensive plan first. We have three objectives that are met. The community character and design goal, which promotes designs that incorporate a variety of housing types in a mix of land uses. Housing objective one point one promotes stable, safe, diverse neighborhoods throughout Woodland Park that provide a wide range of housing options. And link residents to destinations to learn, workshop, recreate and relax. And sustainable environment action one point one point seven. Encourage the redevelopment of underutilized sites to relieve pressure on undeveloped land and to promote increased density and mixed-use development. As you can see here from our future land use map, this site is indicated for community commercial. Unfortunately, that was, the site was rezoned last year, which may have been in opposition to. The recently adopted. Future land use plan. However, this site is currently zoned for multi, multifamily residential and. It's, it's in, that decision has already been made to rezone it despite the currently future land use map. Here's the slide I was looking for. I want to thank you all for sticking with me through these clunky presentations. We do have one item that the applicant partially complies with is number eleven, the design and landscaping. And that is only because, again, we do not have the current color palette that is proposed for these developments. They do comply with all other criteria. And again, please let me know if you'd like to speak about any of these in detail. Our site planner view, we do have all. Let me get to that. Item. We do have all complying. Criteria here, complies to all criteria, and the difference is, is that. With this criteria, the design and landscaping does not. It looks more at the design of the site rather than the design of the buildings, so. It indicates fencing, landscaping, buffer areas, things like that. And so this site plan does comply with that particular. Criteria. We have our criteria in detail. I apologize. Again, we have quite a few conditions of this one that I will read through for the record. Staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend a city council approval of the conditional use permit based on the findings contained in the staff report. And the following conditions. Number one, all development impact fees must be paid, paid prior to the Z D P issue issuance. Including what not limited to tap fees, stormwater capital improvement fees, transportation capital fees, et cetera. All exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of three thousand or warmer and shall not exceed twenty-five feet in height. Number three, pursuant to the municipal code, at least forty percent of the parcel shall remain as open space. That is. A requirement of multifamily housing is the forty percent open space, so that percentage does vary based on the use. Number four, pursuant to the municipal code, healthy existing significant tree shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible. Number five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan, a final plat. Infrastructure zoning development permit. Zoning development permits and billing permits, including civil and construction drawings, final drainage report, landscaping plan, site plan, floor plan and elevations. Grading, sediment and erosion control plan, utility plan, photometric plans. Stormwater permit and stormwater management plan. Number six, prior to city council public hearings, the applicant shall make revisions to the site plan as indicated on the red line plans. And number seven, prior to the commands of any dwelling unit, a townhome plat shall be approved by the city and recorded with Teller County Clerk and Recorder. A townhome plat shall include covenants describing limits on the property and maintenance of all common areas. Prior to the approval of townhome plat, park capital fees shall be submitted and payable at a rate. Established when the applicant's application is submitted. One final item I did want to note, and I apologize that I'm doing this out of order. I received this information at about four fifteen today. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did meet yesterday, and they voted in support of the fee in lieu of land dedication for this project. This concludes our presentation.
Good thinking, Chelsea. Questions for staff? We received a copy of a revised conditions. Which included number eight. And that, that was not mentioned in your presentation.
I apologize for that. Oh, I'm sorry. That was a criteria number eight, so it wasn't a condition. The, the clarification there is that I mistakenly did not identify the stormwater detention facilities that the applicant was proposing and. Crafted my staff report with that understanding. The applicant did provide supplemental information. Pointing out where they were very clearly laid out on their plans, that they include stormwater facilities, so I wanted to make that clear to you. Thank you for bringing that up. I apologize for not. Making that clear in my presentation.
I apologize for not recognizing that as a condition, but as a. Questions at this point?
I have questions that I will ask staff, and I would like to hear the applicant's presentation first.
Very good. Let's take it to that point then.
I, I, just for clarification, so this particular project will have a forty percent set aside for open space. And Parks and Recreation Advisory Board said that that set aside would be, would be considered in lieu of the park capital fee, correct?
Actually, that is inverse, so. And, and again, I apologize. I, I will clear up that, that condition. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board requested fee in lieu of land dedication, so this application will not be required to have that forty percent open space.
It'll be a fee and, okay, gotcha. Thank you. I do need to interject here because this is where things get a little confusing for us newbies. There is the. The, the park capital fee or land dedication for parks, and then there's still open space requirements on the site.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll get there, guys.
I've hit my head against that wall before, so, so know that forty percent for the site still needs to be there, so things like the setbacks can, and landscaping areas can go towards that forty percent. But that larger capital fee for the, the park still needs to be paid.
Okay.
Yes, you, in the, in the staff write-up initiative refers to the third of an acre portion to the southeast corner is not currently slated for development. I would say the property is slated for development. It's not that, it's like there's something more that are going to come there, but looking at the lot as a whole, including that space, which is part of the open space computation such. So it's not that it's not currently pretty set up for development. The lot as a whole, including that, is slated for development with twelve duplexes in the.
I would agree with that.
Hi, my name is Joe Kent. Thank you for having us. Appreciate your time this evening with Hop Tree Development. I don't know if there's a lot to add. The planning department did a really thorough job of going over the presentation and putting everything together and working with us on that. So I really don't have a ton to add. The part of the reason we haven't picked colors yet, we do a lot of work on the front end of any development to reach out to our neighbors. See if they have any input on our design, and one of the things that they requested was input on color schemes. And so we were kind of waiting to get through this process, will work with those people that asked to do that and try and integrate the neighbors' design into that. So anyway, I think we've proven that, you know, we can develop in the city of Woodland Park in keeping with that theme. After completing our most recent project, and we're looking forward to building more homes here in Woodland Park. So I don't really have a lot more to add unless you guys have questions for me.
Joe asked the question. You've reviewed the conditions of approval suggested proposed by staff. Do you agree with them?
Yes, thank you.
So after these duplexes are developed, are they intended for sale or for rent, and you're going to contain, maintain ownership or?
They will be for sale. Single family attachments is how we plan to do that.
Well, well, here, can I ask about some of the building elevations? Maybe you can bring, I could show some of them. Apparently, if colors are still being worked, I guess other things may still be in work. It's written, it looks to me like they can't, they're not consistent with one another. The buildings, all right, stop. Now we just, when you had some, right, take a look at the back, look at the back elevation there. And first off, there's no doors anywhere at the back, but the space in the middle shows, another drawing shows that as a patio with half on each side. Is this set up that there's no access to the patio except you walk through front door and you walk around, circle around the house, walk back in the patio?
Yeah, I think our lands, those are landscape planned by our landscape architect. I don't think that we'll end up having a patio in that location, so we'll probably adjust that when we do our final landscaping plan there.
And can I interject?
Sure.
So in the staff report, there were additional elevations. Those elevations were actually taken from the inside of the two, kind of looking. So if. This is the rear elevation here. Those elevations were taken from here, so what you're seeing is the internal doors. Okay.
If you look at the back of the, are there doors in the back of these properties?
There are not.
There are not. Okay, and the front doors, according to one layout, it seems to show driveway and the driveway extends. Into the, into, into the alcove and the doors on the sides, I mean, the doors. Into the desert, into the alcove and the doors on the sides. The doors would not be visible from the front. The doors would be on the side based upon. Based upon the door, the concrete goes up to here, walk in. I I just say it's not consistent with the doors being there unless you're supposed to concrete ends, you walk on the crushstone and then you go in the front door. See driveways here and the doors must be into the side of the garage.
Is that on the landscape plan that you're looking at that's showing some of those details? So I think our landscape plan was done early on and we'll adjust that as we do our final landscaping plan. So this and those, the patios will come out and the sidewalks will change to adjust obviously to go to the front door.
Fair enough. It's just, they just don't seem to hang together here.
Yeah, all right, that's fair.
Tell me how many parking spaces there are in this development.
So there'll be a total of forty eight parking spaces.
Can you tell me where the where those are?
Sure, there'll be two parking spaces per unit in the garage. There'll be two car garage. And then each driveway will allow room for two vehicles to be parked in each driveway.
Okay, that's a little lesson was indicated in the.
So that our applications and the parking figures ended up being wrong. They got carried over from our previous when we did the rezone. Initially, we were looking at fourteen units on this lot. We pulled that back down. And so those parking numbers and traveling numbers came down a little bit based on the number of units that we have.
The street is twenty feet wide, correct? The street down there, two cars next to each other. If the last, if the houses further in have cars in their driveway, which is part of the needed parking places. How does somebody get out? They drive in. It was back up to the next open driveway and swing around.
There should be room to turn there. There is a recommendation on the red line, obviously, to expand that driveway. So that's something we'll have to work through with the city. And where that ends up at as far as the width. Our most recent project had a twenty foot driveway and there is room allowed to turn around in there.
Yeah, and the last we have, sort of wondering about with the driveway, people had some discussion about it. This is one where the driveway is dead. The last one we had. It was continuing on through. So you're not going to get trapped in there. But this. I assume you have to have signage in here prohibiting any on-street parking.
Absolutely. The HOA as well, it's in our last project as well, will prohibit any parking along the street. The the private driveway down the middle.
So that means I guess parking along this public street outside.
You know, we're over the, well, over the required parking spaces per unit as well, though, with the two driveway and two. Garage parking spots.
And the distance from the garage door to the street and all of these, how much?
From the garage door to the street? Well, that may change depending on our work with. The city on how wide that road ends up being. So I don't know what it is right now. You know, off the top of your head. Twenty one, currently twenty one. From the front of the garage to the driveway.
If it is as consistent with the requirement on a recent project we put in. Which dealt with exactly, in order to make certain that the driveway parking places are long enough for suburban or pickup or something else to stick out in.
I saw that and I think the requirement you put on that was eighteen. So at twenty one would be over. Yeah, kind of what you guys have looked at in the past.
Know if there's thinking that that should also be. It's it's all, it's all fairly tight in the space in here. I don't think you have any questions for applicant two. I did have the concern about turnaround at the north end of the driveway. Fire departments reviewed these plans and do they have any comments? As far as circulation, truck access.
This is one of the comments that's on the red line plans that we still have to work through.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Like to open up for public comment. We have anybody signed up, David? It's like we have a.
I I'm David Mihata. I'm the civil engineer on the project and I just thought I'd add some context for you guys. So as far as the fire access, so we have provided a a fire department turnaround. Within the specified length, less than one hundred and eighty feet from the end of it. And that's typically what fire department would look for.
That's the turnaround between the.
Between the two units on the on the west side, yeah. That was also located in that location in an effort to save some of those trees that are in that area by not doing the building construction.
That to a similar place further north.
There there's a possibility. Our our intent was to try to save those trees in that area is why we chose that location. Because the turnaround has less depth than the units themselves.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to come up and make comment? At the Zoom, any participants online?
Sure have somebody that popped up. It's from Glenn Williams. Four oh one Bernadette Circle says all sounds good. Adjacent property, I guess he's the adjacent property to the northeast of the proposed build.
Well, thank you for that comments. Anyone else? Either in person or online, wishing to make comment. Last chance, saying none. All the comments closed. Thank you.
Just one comment, there's a question for staff. So where we have a color requirement for a building. Of a group like this, and it's going to be privately owned homes that they're going to be sold. How's that color maintained? Once it becomes privately owned. Through HOA or through city code?
Through our city code, we don't specify specific colors, but as part of the overall review of what gets put in place initially, that's something that. We like to look at, just materials, colors, that kind of thing. But I'm not aware of maintenance type provision in place at this point in time. So. Commissioner Harvey's right that you really are dependent upon active HOAs to.
That's that's fine. I just was curious. Thank you.
As well, but try to enforce it.
It's not a question for staff during sidewalks. I think on the south side of the street, we have sidewalks and that's probably because of the zoning.
Sidewalks will be required on the north side of Spruce Haven Drive as part of this development. They are not currently on the plans. It was part of the red line plans.
I want to draw to the attention of the commission that with this particular project, we received a memo from city utilities. And I hope everybody had a chance to read that memo. A very important memo and how it relates. To this project. If you haven't read it, I'd like to offer just a brief summary of what that talks about. But this this memo written from city utilities, the operations director, Kip Wiley. And basically, he says. He talks about what we've been, we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings about the water allocation report. He put it into a memo form and some of the highlights. The project's twelve multifamily units will expand the city's water service above the. Thirteen thousand six hundred built out population. Well, that's kind of the information we've been looking for when we've been talking about water and now that this is a project. He also says that the wastewater system, future capacity needs, needs are adequate. So wastewater is okay. But he also addressed water in this report. He talks about the difficulty of trying to predict future development and water use for vacant property. He says currently we have the physical water supply to support this project of twelve units if built today. He talks about in the future, projects may or may not be able to be served by city water and wastewater systems. Approval projects today will impact potential projects in the future due to our limited water supply. He states that the city cannot guarantee inadequate water supply in the future for future projects. He said potential future projects would have to borrow from existing allocated water designated for vacant land. Planted or unplanted subdivisions, projects, so on and so forth. In summary, the project can be supported in the short term. However, in the long term, without the city legally acquiring. Purchasing, developing additional water supplies and infrastructure, future projects may be in jeopardy. And he concludes that for for multifamily projects such as this. So the city council has the authority, even the sole authority, to be able to approve and allocate multifamily unit. Water tasks for this particular project. Bring this to your attention because again, this is what we've been talking about for a long time as far as water usage goes. And then the memo clearly identifies this particular issue. Certainly, I'm. Concerned that we would not be able to provide for water for twelve projects with a lot of time reallocated from other uses. Already been approved. However, but I think in in the short term, we, the city can provide the water. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, make sure that if you had a chance to read it, you've read it. But if you haven't, I'd offer to reset summary. I've also got several comments and considerations. One is that I think in the final site plan, we need to be very specific on the intent of track aid, which is the retention pond. Which is shown on the landscaping plan. I think the staff report at one time said that no detention was proposed, but it is. But so we do, we need to clearly indicate on plan that particular track set aside for for retention. And also lot number thirteen, we talked about as being an open space track. Let's go ahead and I think we need to identify that. To on the site plan as being a open space track and not for future development. The. In addition to providing for. Wastewater, wastewater, drainage water retention pond and track A, there is an issue that was. Brought to our attention in in that particular water use memo talks about that there is no. Place to convey that water on that site to a city owned facility. I know we're requiring a drainage plan and a stormwater permit, store management plan for the project. That that's a very difference, definite concern that if you're bringing this drainage to that particular track. It's got to go somewhere after it's done being retained. So that is a concern. In that water memo, utilities also brings that there is a challenge of providing wastewater. Challenges for the specific site, specifically that the photography does not allow. A tie-in to the existing city wastewater system. And that's important. If you if you're going to create wastewater, you've got to bring it into the system and. Bring it to the plant. He suggests that lots may need to be reconfigured, adequate slope and fill needs to be. Placed on the site to lift the sewer lines at a higher level location to. Have the wastewater flow downhill, which is currently uphill. To to the streets of Coraline and Spruce Haven. So when we're looking at the. The water issue in the short term, we can provide for for the water for this particular project, but in the long term, maybe not. It's gonna, somebody's going to have to pay for. And also suggest a couple of. Notes, one would be the note for intent of track A about thirteen and also note. Talking about. The screening that's provided next to Fred's toe towing. There, I could barely understand the site plan showing where that fence might be. But we need to detail what that that fence would be. So I I have. Definitely concerns about this project, both from a water point of view and wastewater. Again. I'd like to see. I know the the plans have been submitted for review, the review by staff. And I'd like to see a more independent of the plan addressing several's concerns addressed in the staff board. And particularly the memo being addressed. And I'd like to have a little discussion with the commission. About the the water issue that could have been brought to our attention. As you started in the session, I recall a year ago, when just talking about somebody, there was a question about. Drainage, which direction the water flow and sewer such as all. Is that just a bad recollection? That had been raised as a subject before and some uncertainty of the ability to. Was it going to require pumping or something else?
It 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 seems like that that issue has not been addressed.
And if I remember correctly, there was a subject to some discussion.
For this particular project?
I believe you're right, Lee. Yeah, just to jump in, it wasn't discussed on our rezone. I think it has been addressed. We we just got these comments the day before this meeting, so we're still working through some of them. I think David can address a lot of your concerns on the water and the sewer our engineer, if you don't mind.
No, I'd like to hear.
Again, the easiest one, a sewer has been designed. We're into final construction drawings for that and that has, you know, adequate way to. Create up the Coraline Street. We did the grading to raise the side in the corner to allow for that adequate grade. In fact, I think I exceed the minimum standard. I think it's half a percent for an eight inch sewer with a park and we're. One point oh five, which is just the number that sticks in my head from the springs. As far as water allocation, I believe, you know, couldn't get a hold of Kip today to talk about that, but I think there was some preliminary discussion when they. Rezone the parcel last year with council on this parcel. Kip's, it's been on his radar and we understand that we'll have to take it to council and get it get relegated that water at that point. It's council decision. I I think one thing we should talk about is is far as the clarification of the. The forty percent number that's been thrown out. My understanding that's at a ZDP level for the individual lots. That forty percent coverage, building coverage on those is where that would apply. I I don't know that we intend to utilize that out parcel for development at this time. But but I don't think it counts as our open space. We're well above forty percent open space on an individual lot criteria basis. Anything I missed, Larry, that you wanted to address?
So so let's talk about lot thirteen a minute. Right now, it's showing us not being part of the project. And do you have any indication in the preliminary indications, what you might do with that lot?
No preliminary indications now. Honestly, it's it's kind of separate from the others in a drainage scenario. It's also above our limit of the twelve units allowed on a single feed water main. So so that's why we we've kind of kept it out of this process at this time. Given the opportunities, maybe with Fred's towing, it's a parcel that may have some value at that. at that point incorporated into redevelopment of that person.
I see.
But no, no current plans on that. You did talk about drainage and outfalls in those criteria. Again, it's standard practice nowadays that, you know, where I'm utilizing full spectrum detention on the site that the impervious areas are running through for both water quality, water quality, capture volume, and you know, the two through hundred year event detention before they outfall in the historic patterns.
And where would that go? I mean, the topography.
Where it's going now. So the intent of the full spectrum detention is we will be have release rates at the two year event, five year event, ten year event, twenty five year event, fifty year event, hundred year event that are less than the historic, less than vacant ground, including, you know, some detention from upstream development that isn't detained on our site. So we will have less outfall of of storm drainage on the adjacent parcels.
Okay.
Drainages across adjacent parcels?
It is. It follows the historic patterns that partial drains to the northeast. And we still have to drain to the northeast, but the intent of that pond is to detain and release, you know, at a slower rate for a longer time through those parcels.
What else?
Well, I'm I'm asking Larry if you want to add a condition that talks to the council's responsibility to allocate to multifamily from the existing allotment of of water taps. Or is that necessary for this this request? It'll have to be done. I just don't know if it has to be included in this CUP.
My understanding is that it does not. We did meet with Kip last week and he explained the water allocation process to us. It was a very long meeting. But we, my understanding is that it is the duty of council regardless of what your recommendation is as a board.
And then my takeaway also, I I really don't hold me to this, but I'm going to do my best to try and like set up a work session with Kip at some point so we can talk in more depth about that whole program because it is really quite complicated. But when councils allocating taps, it's really the pace at which the taps get issued. Not so much availability, you know, that they're they're there. So it's how fast can they be pulled in in, you know, how many per calendar year kind of thing is what that really has to do with and not, is it available? It's literally how fast they can be sold.
I I would perhaps disagree with, is it available? Because eventually they will not be available. It it doesn't have any impact on our decision on this project, but going forward, I mean, it may come to a point where we we have a lottery. We did that at one time in Little Park. Water will not always be available, but allotment is again, is the city council's responsibility to 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 move from one one water account to another from multifamily to single family and vice versa. But this just, I I really do appreciate Kip's memo. It is something that we need going forward. We need to make sure that everyone understands this project, it's first come, first served, and the water is there. But future projects, it may not be the case.
And one of my other takeaways was that it's at rezoning that when that water discussion really should be considerably more critical. Since the the baseline that was put in place was based on a current number of vacant lots and how they were zoned at that point in time. And so when you start changing those kind of things, that's really the critical point to be talking about how does that potentially impact water.
And several years ago, there was a vacant lot study that was provided to council and the commission. It might be time to update that.
And just real quick, since Karen brought it up. In the memo, it does indicate that the result is higher water usage than the currently zone use allowed in the community commercial district. That is actually incorrect because it was rezoned and that analysis was redone at that time of zoning. So that may be part of where Kip's concern is coming from is if he's working off full data, he may be concerned that this is a use that's higher than what was currently allocated for.
For the song.
Gotcha. Right. But since it was rezoned, it was reallocated.
Carol, my my intent was just to bring bring the commission and the council where this particular issue and this particular memo was just timely to be able to do that. I I certainly understand and respect it's the city council's decision whether to actually issue the task for multifamily project and I respect that. And but I would like to ask them to consider these things that Kip brought up to his memo, and that's going to be the basis for future discussion.
If you don't mind, just a quick comment on the water. When they're talking about the reason, we did go through a lot of discussion on allocating that it would require more allocation of water taps for that property when we went through the reason. That was part of the reason we were trying to get a hold of Kip, but we got those comments late and we wanted to talk to him about that before because I don't think he caught that we did that once before. And there was an analysis done and we hashed that out with city council. And so there was a lot of discussion on a proof basically that they were effectively saying that there would be more water allocated to that when we rezoned it a year ago.
Yes, staff, there's some discussion earlier with the applicant too. It sounded like when I asked about the twenty foot right away for the road setbacks, such it sounded like there may still be some ongoing discussion about that subject. Is there, are there different views here? Or is this what we're looking at? A work in process or is this all agreed?
So there are currently red line plans and I I do apologize to the applicant for not providing those earlier. That is simply an error on my part. The the street sections and rights of way are the duty of engineering. And so I personally cannot speak to whether or not they are resolved. I know they are currently on the red line. So it's 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 in the process of being resolved as well.
When is this scheduled to go to the city council?
I believe on the second is for the first reading.
June second. First reading, then it'll be two weeks after that for the hearing.
Because honestly, I I'm not totally comfortable hearing that this isn't done. I I don't like the fact that the whole the whole site plan doesn't include the entire lot, includes maybe five percent of the lot, not the entire lot. And yeah, obviously, I've heard other some of the, I guess, maybe it's just the landscaping plan that was incorrect and such too, but it gives, I have the general impression that this isn't quite done yet. I mean, that's and I hate to see, I I hate to, if if I hate to see something, it's still kind of in motion and there's things that aren't quite ready yet. Going to the city council, one of the things that's our recommendation we ought to do is we ought to be enough of a reviewer of this to so that the city council can expect things when it gets there, if we have a favorable recommendation, proceed that it it's really ready to go.
I do understand that concern. We do have a a condition that all of the final site are all of the final plans be agreed upon prior to that city council hearing. I I'm not sure if that really persuades you though, because you are not seeing those final plans currently, and I understand that.
We we could, we don't have to table this, but we could continue it. If we were to continue it, could we still keep it on schedule with the timeline for the city council?
Unfortunately, no, the the city council documents are due at noon the same day of the next city planning commission meeting, so we would not have time to make all of documents. I agree.
What goes to city council is the the in ordinance, since it's a conditional use permit, and that generally includes the list of conditions within that ordinance. And like I said, my deadline for getting that into the packet is before you would actually have your next meeting, but like eight hours.
Yeah, I I don't know. Two weeks is enough to fix the problems myself. No, our next meeting is in two weeks. That's their saying they couldn't.
I I was just more, we're talking about a continuation discussion. I was suggesting it would be continued to four weeks from now or not the next plan commission, but the one after. Keep staff, now because plenty of time to work some of these things out.
I'm sorry, do you mind if we just, that would be a significant delay for us, the two weeks. I think that if you wanted to have some of these things wrapped up. One, I think they will be wrapped up as we work through each city department, but if you guys want to see them to approve it, I would request a shorter timeline in between there, and I think that we would have time to address those.
So if we went for a continuance until the twenty sixth of May, it would obviously delay the the council's consideration, but
Could I make one observation as well, just as a as a pair of fresh eyes? Really what's elevating that this site plan to the level of the planning commission is the use. The use is the main aspect that's being reviewed here. The site plan, it would typically be approved at a staff level and would move forward through staff. Just that little bit of perspective, I'm not sure if that changes anyone's opinion.
It it doesn't for me, having served on city council, I expect the planning commission to have done a more thorough review and make a recommendation, and I I still have questions about this project. If everything from elevation to the retention pond to the length of driveways, it's it's still out there and and we're not going to get that until we see a a more complete site plan.
The applicant obviously wants to move ahead of this, but I say I'm not convinced that I can vote favorably to pass this on right now to either a mixed vote or a negative vote would probably not be desirable to the applicant too. And if there's some additional time would allow it to be favorably viewed by the planning commission, that might be advantageous to the applicant.
Yeah, I think that's that's great. I'm just hoping we don't, we don't need two meetings, I don't think, to to arrange those things. I mean, if you guys agree, I think if we we could get it on the next meeting, I think we can address all of your concerns with city staff and get the site plan and everything finalized for you for your next meeting. If that's a meaningful to you guys as well.
Say from a staff perspective, I have issues with the ninth of June, so that's not an option. And if they're willing to be that aggressive about it, I'm comfortable with you guys continuing this to your next meeting on May twenty sixth. Because worst case scenario, it then gets continued again. You know, for some reason, but I would I would give them that, I would suggest giving them that opportunity.
And at that twenty six meeting, the fans have not progressed enough to to see what the plan's all about, we can continue.
Exactly.
Another two weeks.
Or or four, she's not available.
No, you guys are busy on the ninth. There's there's no room on that schedule that night.
Okay.
That wasn't teased.
So if we, so if we don't have a a plan that's acceptable for us on the twenty sixth, we can go ahead and knowing that our agenda is already full on the night.
We do have to.
So there'd be a little incentive to get to get this job done.
We will get it done.
I believe there's plenty of incentive already, and I do have full confidence that we can work through these comments.
Okay. So I would like to hear an articulation of these concerns again, just for my own record. I did hear that there was the elevation views of the buildings were not clear on how they were going to be put in place. Is that correct? And then there was another one on the retention, which I'm not sure why there's not clarity on that. I am not, I see a retention area shown on the site plan with the idea that it would feed existing natural outfall from the property at a lower rate for the conditions that were stated. So I'm not sure. I don't have a concern there. I've kind of.
They're they're from an objective standpoint, there is no concern there. That was purely author error in the staff report.
Correct. And that was articulated earlier, but I think I heard it mentioned.
I want to see, I would like to see that in the staff report that we send forward to the council. I mean, that we should be doing that due diligence for the council.
Right. So so we've identified that there's an error in the staff report that she could correct without
That would be pretty easy.
postpone our discussion to another two weeks if it's a staff report correction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So.
And to Kim, I'm also going back to city utilities memo.
Correct.
In which they expressed a concern about where is this going to be conveyed water? So.
They they mentioned that that brings up future concerns in that memo, that they also said there was adequate water now for this.
Right.
Development. So I'm just looking at this from the standpoint of we have a zoned area that now has a plan to get the conditional use permit for that worked and it has the preliminary site plan, it shows the number of units retention, the basics that I thought were stated by staff that the conditions were met, excluding the one item, which was the color of the units. And so I guess I'm still questioning.
Well, I just, the addition those have here is the landscape plan was long, it wasn't just trees, it was concrete where things are, which affects your ability to look at open space.
Okay.
A portion of the lot is not included on the plan at all. And the elevations were.
I I guess I don't understand which portion of the lot.
The L shaped part over there.
Lot thirteen.
I get lot thirteen, I guess.
Which is shown as not having any development on it.
Well, it's not shown on the site plan at all.
No, it is.
It's shown on the site.
It's shown on the site.
It's a lot.
Oh, it's just, it it's shown with no development. And that's what they agreed that they're going to do with it. So I don't see what's missing.
And then there's the other thing. So what got me worried was hearing the discussion about about the dimensions of the street and setbacks.
Which is on the red line print in the handout. The twenty four foot code versus the twenty foot. The utility easements also mentioned on the red line. So I I'm feeling a little more comfortable that staff has addressed the open issues and the conditions that they meet all these conditions minus the one. And if we identify something that's short, like the mention of retention, and I could correct that, could we not put that as a condition on a motion? Or do we need to wait two weeks to correct those items? Because I do see the lot fully shown on the site plan. I I differ from you that it is drawn. So that's that's my comment. I just, I don't know that it's worth the two weeks. I haven't been on council to see. So.
If there's, well, in my experience, you know, but I've just been here too long. I was on planning commission many years ago, then went to council. And what I expected on council is not some missing pieces in the staff report. It shouldn't impact the approval of the CUP. I think that the applicant has done his due diligence, but in the staff report, we do need to correct some of those issues, one of them being the elevation. I mean, that that's confusing to me. Does it in, I mean, this is, this is preliminary, of course, but we've got a landscape plan when really we wanted a site plan.
No, both plans are in the in the packet, site plan and the landscape.
But the elevation.
So I'm not sure.
Are not, not from the.
Our elevations are requirement of the submittal package for the conditional use permit. Or is that, I thought that was more of an extra.
I believe they are requirement. I can double check that for you.
So if if the commission is comfortable with approving the CUP, not a requirement for the applicant, but a requirement for the staff to go back and clean up some of those discrepancies in the staff report, minor as they might may be. Would you think we could do it tonight and not not continue it?
That would be my opinion, actually. Yes, I would like to offer that. I, I'm the newest member, so I might have to defer to others, but that is what I see from my experience.
Appreciate your opinion on that.
Thank you.
I guess good notes about the sidewalk. It's not showing on these plans either. You have other plans, but that's the red line notes.
Could I add a little bit about a discussion? Is appropriate? It, it's prescient to what you were, you were looking for on the sidewalk. So I actually had a meeting with Ben Schmidt earlier today and we discussed this project, the city engineer. And I think every intention on this parcel is to provide fees in lieu for the sidewalk for an inch along Spruce Haven. In, in both our minds, it doesn't make sense to require sidewalk construction for a limited area and scope when there's no connectivity either to the east or the west.
Next parcel gets developed.
Exactly. So it's better to get fees in the city. Yeah. So we would pay fees in lieu to the city for that sidewalk construction. I also did talk to him about the roadway width. And, and we're still, you, you know, in discussion on that. His preference would be 24, but that's for a public street right away. We've just completed a couple of projects with 20 foot right away or 20 foot roadways. So I don't know that it's a codified issue. It's more a, a, his thought on it was if this becomes a public street, it would need to be 24. We're not proposing a public street. And it's not to say we're against it. That's up for, that's for my clients to decide the width of their street and, and if they want to work with the city and, and make that, but I think we're open to anything at this point. And usually those are handled at staff level when we get to that point in the project. Thank you.
Ken, on the fees in lieu of for the sidewalk, well, Karen, should that be included as a condition on, in a CUP or is that appropriate?
Oh, it is appropriate to add that within this particular one, since it's the, the residential use. You're fine adding that as a condition.
I think the sidewalk should be a condition, whether it's fees and lieu or the actual physical construction. We can have further discussion on that. We have a prior application was for Fred's towing. If that goes away and becomes a commercial development, it would be continuity of sidewalk I would expect to this property. And if we pay fees and lieu, I imagine those dollars wouldn't come back to this park property for the, no, here probably by the school or some other place around this, this typically happens. So personally, I'm a little tired of fees and moves because we keep giving our sidewalks away and nothing gets constructed. And I would like to see, you got to start somewhere. You build that section of sidewalk. When the other properties get developed, might have continuity. And so if there's a requirement for sidewalk on this parcel, I'd like to see it built. Anyway, we, we need something to address the sidewalks.
In the CUP.
In the CUP, either as a sidewalk physically constructed or as a field. And also as far as the, I'm concerned about the and I saw the width of the road, but the length and what happens at the end. You drive down there and make a wrong turn. Your friend's not home. How do you get out? It was not good opportunity to turn around there. Fire truck turnarounds at one point. They may have their opinion where it's appropriate. The fire department may. I think further down would serve dual purpose as both the turnaround and for trucks and for visitors and other traffic. So I'm not sure how to resolve that issue. As we got a discussion whether we continue it and look for some further development there or there are conditions we can place. I certainly appreciate the developers wanting to move forward and more time would matter. Continue with the two weeks. I'm not sure when we get the council after that with proper notifications. I will be the first available time to give a counsel, if we do continue this for the two week period.
Be the 16th. Which for frustrating.
Currently, if it's approved tonight, it would give the council.
On the second of June.
Or just a two week delay.
The challenge with June is that there's five Thursdays. So there is a, a longer time period before city council would, would actually do the hearing on that and that would be July 7th. So that's where the, the bigger delay happens, just in terms of how those Thursdays fall, just so that everybody's on the same month.
Like to move forward with this tonight. There are some hurdles we need to get through and I'm not quite sure if enough requirements can get us there.
I'd like to see revised plans. And comments from the staff that they, those concerns that we've addressed tonight have been addressed.
Okay, I gotta throw an idea out on the table. I don't may go over horribly. I know you all typically meet on Thursdays. But what about a special meeting of the planning commission for this item on May 25th? That's a Wednesday. That would then in theory allow us to get done on a very tight timeframe. What we need to, to meet the deadline for the council agenda for initial posting on June 2nd.
Do you have any other items scheduled for the 26th?
There is, yes. That's already noticed for the 26th.
So you have two meetings that week.
Work in your heart if that's.
We won't have to have a special meeting because if we continue it, we can continue to that, they certain in the hearing requirements for this particular meeting would just carry over to that.
It's for notification for council.
That's, that's an issue, but I, I, I feel more comfortable having more answers.
I, I personally am not available on May 25th.
Okay, I didn't say it was a great idea. It was just a note.
It wasn't for the holiday maybe.
Well, we need to get some direction here. Two issues to move forward with this with conditions. We don't have a good resolution. We've got some opposition to that looking for continuation. Ultimately, I'd like to see more complete drawings, coordinated drawings. So we, we need motion to move forward at one level. Either continuance, it sounds like approval with additional conditions.
Is there a way to take a poll to see where the bulk of the commission stands on whether we move forward or vote on it tonight?
Yeah, it's called a motion.
We have to move to.
You can, you know, we can make a motion to approve as is with, and then that gets denied. I guess the applicant would be.
No, no. That's why I don't want to go there.
I'll move that the matter be continued until our next meeting on May 25th.
26th.
26th Thursday.
Thursday, the 26th.
I will support that motion. I'll second that.
Well, we have a motion. Like to take poll please.
Sure. Chris or Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen.
Yes.
Commissioner or Chair Hartsfield.
Yes.
Krishna Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, but I would ask, have we given you enough direction? I, I don't think there's anything that's insurmountable. It's just that we needed a, a more complete staff report and site plan.
Do you have a list of notes? I do. Yes, I, I asked her to recap those for you. In particular, it was the elevations that were not clear in regards to the sidewalks and the landscaping issue and how the buildings are accessed. Their work, the concern about the retention, which was to include my supplemental staff report and to the regular staff report. There was concern about the, the wastewater and how that is conveyed uphill. So I believe that was clarified, but we would like more clarification on it in the staff report. As a condition, we would like to include some condition for sidewalks, whether they be fee and lieu or required to be built. And then the turnaround and determining the best location for the turnaround and for fire purposes and for general traffic.
The other things I had in there was clear intentions for track day and lot 13. And then there was also discussion related to the screening next to the current Fred's towing location and fencing details.
Yeah, clearly show that on the site plan and a detail of what that's supposed to be.
With some discussion about the road width also. Get a fit of answer on that. Includes the hearings for the evening. We'll take it to reports. Does staff have any reports to provide?
I do not this evening.
Just Chelsea. She got a new planner.
Yeah.
And she's here.
And working.
Yes. Any comments from? Very good. Well, thank you for your first minute, Chelsea. We appreciate all the efforts and.